All right, ladies and gentlemen. Our second round is for the county commission. All right, we have two of the three candidates who are running for reelection. Both of them are running unopposed, Mike Stephen and Jeff Culpersen. Am I pronouncing it correctly? All right. If everybody has found their seats, we'll go ahead and get started. All right, gentlemen, I'll give you five minutes to open your marks. Mike, would you start us?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just gonna kinda give you just kinda the same talk. I spoke to the Boy Scouts a couple of weeks ago, so I'm gonna kinda give you the same talk I gave then. And what I told -- I'll introduce myself. I'm Mike Stephen. I'm the county commissioner from the south part of the county. Represent Sherman Township, which is Lynnwood area, Reno, which is near Lawrence, and then Tongonoxie. And they have now added Alexandria Springdale to my district. So I represent south and west part of Leavenworth County. I was elected three and a half years ago. They went from three commissioners to five commissioners. I mean, yeah, five commissioners. And I was the first commissioner after the Tyson issue down in the south part of the county. If anybody recall the Tyson issue. And one of the main issues that I focused on in my time on the commission is openness and transparency in government. Making it so that things don't just happen, that you realize what's happening. And we've done this through a number of different ways. Town hall meetings. I had a lot of town hall meetings in all areas of the district. I've had articles in the paper. You've seen some of those about county issues. We've had breakfast with the Commerce Department, folks down in Tongonoxie. We've had community breakfasts. We have task forces. Right now, we have one dealing with property taxes to try to get Senator Pittman and his friends to deal with those issues. And I know they are interested. But that's been one of my focuses as county commissioner in the south part of the district. The other two are lowering property taxes. We've discovered that when you get into the property tax issue, that actually you get your bill, it says Leavenworth County on it, but guess what? The county portion of your property taxes is about 25 cents. The school districts portion, depending on what school district you're in, is around 40 cents. And then your cities and your townships and your library boards and all your other local subdivisions make up the rest of that property tax dollar. So, and on the property tax issue, we also, as commissioners, discovered that, my goodness, whether we lower your property taxes a little on the county level, these other entities, you know, your tax bill can still go up. And then even if everybody lowers your mill levy, guess what? Your property taxes are being evaluated based on market value. So guess what? Your property taxes could still go up because the value of your properties been increased by the assessors. So that's one thing I've been working on. The other thing, economic development. We've made some major changes in economic development, which we could talk about, but we had a task force on economic development. And one thing we discovered is when we're dealing with, you know, zoning of property, we have what they call a comprehensive plan. And we discovered when we have economic development, it's just kinda been scattershot. And so we thought, we need to really have a comprehensive plan developed. And we put together a task force of local officials and the economic development entities, LCDC and Port Authority. And what we've come up with is we have a department of the county now. We redistributed the funds. We didn't change the amount of funding. We just redistributed the funds and we have an economic development department in the county. And we have Tom Cole, who's our economic development director, and he is working on a economic development plan, which is gonna be kinda like our comprehensive plan for economic development, trying to get all the cities together on the same page. So we're working together and the county, and try and provide leadership to economic development. So those are the three things I've worked on. I focused on those issues. And there's a lot more, but when I spoke to the Boy Scouts, one thing I told them is, you know, we focus on what is the smallest entity of government in our society? Do I have a...
Precinct commander.
Well, it's small. That's elected officials it is, but the smallest entity, if you're driving out in the county, you see these silos, the smallest governing entity is the family. Each family is its own governing entity. And then we move up the scale. So our job as commissioners is to make it easier for your family to function and make it easier on every level so government doesn't interfere. The least interference, the least regulation, and I'm out of time.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's on.
Go. Okay.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me this morning. I'm Jeff Culpersen. I'm the first district county commissioner, which is basically Shawnee Street in Leavenworth City, north to the Ashland County line. We got three kids, 10 grandkids. I'm a pilot. I've got a hangar and a runway at my back 40. I run a black herd for grubs with my brother. I've got a body shop, some rental houses, and I play drums in a band. So after 35 years in county government, I decided to be a county commissioner because I made a list over the years of things past commissions had done that I knew were a bad idea. About half of those affected the budgets directly. So after I was elected, first year, we went to work on the budget and we kept the mill levy flat. We inherited a lot of issues that we couldn't do a lot about in the first year of the budget. So once we were able to make some changes, then every year after that, we've lowered the mill levy. Right now, we have the eighth lowest mill levy in the state of Kansas. So out of 105 counties, there's only seven other counties you could live in to pay less county taxes. This, having the eighth lowest mill levy in the state is both difficult and remarkable. Mostly difficult because 35% of our county is tax exempt. With Fort Leavenworth, the prisons, churches, and the federal prison, we traded, basically, the jobs that Fort Leavenworth provides for them not paying taxes. So it's understood without Fort Leavenworth, we wouldn't be here. They provide the most jobs of anybody in the county. But the problem is, being 35% tax exempt, that means 65% of us, the rest of us, are paying all the bills. So without a pilot check, pilot check is a payment in lieu of taxes. The federal government understands that, for instance, here's an example in Yellowstone, there's a county that has 80% of the national park. So 20% of them are the only ones paying bills. There's no way that county could function without a pilot check. Leavenworth County doesn't get a pilot check because they only pay those for Department of Interior facilities, not Department of Defense facilities. So the problem with that is it makes the rest of us pay more in taxes. That being said, we understand now, the county, trying to lower taxes by cutting the county budget is no longer a possible or long-term solution. Over the years, they have severely underfunded every county department. We've reached a minimum level of acceptable services in every department of the county. The current forecast, for an example, in the road bridge budget allows to replace one bridge a year. It's pretty simple math. We have 150 bridges. Bridge lasts about 50 years. That means you need to be replacing three bridges a year, or you're gonna have to figure out which bridges you're gonna have to close. So basically, they've painted us into a corner. It's basically a balancing act every single budget cycle. We do not have the money to cover everything we need. So we try to figure out what is absolutely necessary and what is not. This is why Senate Bill 13 did nothing to Leavenworth County. We have budgeted as close to revenue neutral as we possibly could have for many, many years now already. So when you can't cut the budget anymore to lower taxes, you have to find other ways. One thing we did was stop paying rent for the council and agent building. We were paying almost $100,000 a year rent on the council and agent building, which was the old county infirmary, which is a budget cut. We used to have a nursing home, the county infirmary, and budget cuts. Got rid of that. So we rented that building back from the owner. We sold it to for a council and agent. So we got the Cushing Building now. We got that from St. Luke's for free. And we're gonna rent out the third and fourth floor, which will pay for not only the remodeling, but all of the utility bills for the county departments also. Something else we did was we leased new cars. You might have seen them driving around. We used to use old sheriff's cars. I did a five-year study. We were spending way more on repairing and fixing those cars than the newly leased cars were costing. We bought, brought back some retirement benefits to try to retain people, which actually saves us money. I'm trying to show a 20-minute speech of five minutes, so I'm kinda going fast. The biggest change that this commission has committed to doesn't even fall under our purview. We understand where the real change needs to happen is at the state level. We're trying to educate as many people and constituents as possible to make a real difference. All these small groups outraged by high taxes can make a real difference if their efforts and influence are in the right areas. Working with our local state officials is key to fixing big problems. There's my five minutes.
Gentlemen, thank you. Our first question. Question number one. Economic development in Leavenworth County is directly tied to our transportation infrastructure. What will you do during your term to improve the transportation infrastructure and stimulate economic growth?
Well, as I mentioned in the opening statement about the changes in economic development that we've made, can you hear me? Changes in economic development that we've made. One of the parts of that is what we learned through the task force on economic development was that in the past, Leavenworth County's been kind of losing out on some of the areas of funding that we could have received. And part of that is because you get Tongonoxie asking for Road Project A, Lansing asking for Road Project C, and Leavenworth asking for Road Project X from KDOT. And then what happens is, they look at it and say, hmm, they're not all on the same page. And Johnson County's on the same page. Guess where the money goes? Right over to Johnson County. So what we have developed is a regional transportation improvement plan study. And KDOT is putting $250,000 in, Leavenworth City's putting $90,000 in, Leavenworth County's putting $150,000 in, Baser $15,000, Tongonoxie $15,000, Lansing $30,000, all putting into this regional transportation study, looking at projects. And we have a lot of projects that have been on the shelf for 20 years, proposed road improvement projects. But looking at all those projects, prioritizing all those projects, getting all the cities and the county hopefully say, Project A, B, C, these are the three projects Leavenworth County wants to put as our first three top priorities. Then when we go to KDOT and we're on the same page as communities and as the county, the odds and expectation that we could get adequate funding will be much higher. So that is something we have directly implemented, and it's part of the, what I call enhanced economic development, which is part of getting this plan put together.
Cue video. Check. Mike, check.
So it's gonna play a video, and I've got a map back here on the wall to answer this question. I'm proposing this new bridge connecting Eisenhower and Lansing to the 152-435 intersection. So I truly believe you can only rely so much on others, and you should do anything you can to help yourselves. Mostly, I've been talking about how to fix the state's problems and the county's problems and budgets. But one idea is to boost our local economy enough that we can drastically lower our own taxes. If we were to build this new bridge improving the connectivity between our community and the Kansas City metropolitan area, we would insulate ourselves from high tax issues. The county commission has completed a preliminary feasibility study that shows you could get from Eisenhower and Lansing to 152 and 435 in six minutes. So we've been reaching out to local officials and cities within our community to get this new bridge out there rolling. We've met with Black County officials, KDOT, MoDOT, Marin County Regional Council, KPA, several other agencies to proceed with a regional transportation study. My hopes are that this eastern gateway project will surface to the top of this list of what our local area needs. If you are five minutes from a community, you become part of that community. I talked to Liberty folks, city officials out there, and they said they were struggling in many of the same ways we are. So this basically shows you if you were at QuikTrip in Lansing, that's Eisenhower Road in red, and you headed east on this path, you would get to Airport 35 and 152 in six minutes. If you look on a map, it's only four miles from the city limits to Lansing, two part boat. So I talked to the city Liberty folks, and they said they were struggling in a lot of the same ways we were. Slow business growth, lack of industrial relief or tax base, even minimal residential expansion. Until 152 happened for them. If you haven't been to Liberty, Missouri lately, yell yourself to take a short drive over there and see all the activity going on. Since they were connected to 152 highway, they have exploded in residential business and industrial growth. We would be the mirror image of Liberty, Missouri if we connected the west end of 152 to this new bridge in Eisenhower. When people see that it's only six minutes from Lansing to 152, seven minutes to the airport, seven minutes to Zuma Rosa, and Parkville is five minutes away, everyone knows that getting more business and industry is the key to lowering your taxes. Figuring out how to make that happen is our job. Ingress and egress, I believe, is the answer.
Your time is up.
So this video is six minutes long, and it shows you a car traveling at the speed lanes on the exact path that it will take. It's six minutes to get from Lansing to 152.
If you want to leave and play, and I can ask a question on the next one, they can just watch right. You guys can travel. Don't be distracted, though.
You're just gonna leave the door?
Yeah. Next question. I think after this is done, I'll put the lights back on.
Okay, next question. Leavenworth County, its rural areas, and six cities jointly face complex problems that a single organization cannot solve. What is your assessment of the collaboration and coordination to deal with our country's current challenges? And what might you do in your next term to improve joint efforts to meet economic and social challenges?
Well, I think in my last discussion on economic development, that kinda dovetails right into this because we are trying, as I said, to get all of the cities and the county together on the same page when we're talking about road projects, when we're talking about efforts that we need to get funding from the state. If we're all on the same page, the likelihood, if we all hang together, it beats hanging separately. That's not exactly how the quote goes. But the goal here is to focus on really working together collaboratively and as a team as citizens of the county. And that is what our focus has been. Now, I wanted to say a word about this bridge project related to that. We received $19 million of CARES Act funding during the pandemic, and we distributed that largely through the cities and the county had some expenditures. And then through the ARPA funds, which is America Rescue Plan Act funds, we got, received $16 million. But one thing they do through ARPA is they have what's called mega projects. And if you have these type of projects, at least one of them in your county or in your region on the shelf, ready to go, when we get more funding from the federal government on various, you know, infrastructure, they're gonna do stimulus, because you know this is probably gonna happen in the future, if we get this project on the shelf as our mega project, then we've got it. We're ready to do it. We get all the senators in the region, we get all the lovely folks involved and say, we want, this is our mega project. And that's another issue, getting everybody on the same page. Because what we found is these mega projects, guess where they're going? They're going to Maryland. They're going to New York. They're going to California. But Midwest, our region, doesn't have them on them. So it's important to get these mega projects on the, on the queue. Thanks.
Same question. So we hired Tom Cole, like Mike said, as a county staff employee so that the county would have more hands-on approach to economic development. And we've had LCDC for years. I think a little confusion is, it didn't cost taxpayers anymore when we hired Tom Cole because we just redistributed, allocated the same money that we had for LCDC to Tom Cole to do. So Tom's salary is actually coming out of the money we were already giving LCDC. And I think it's important for us to work more with existing businesses and all the cities together, just like Mike was saying. A lot of projects are awarded to places that have a cooperation between the municipalities and local governments. We've missed out on a lot of opportunities because one city wasn't involved, or two cities didn't like that, or the county wasn't on the same page as one of the cities. So we win a lot more contracts and a lot more bids for assistance when everybody's on the same page. So I think that's probably our focus now. When we hired Tom Cole, was to get a more collaborative effort for economic development.
Your questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you both for being here, both of you for serving in the role of county commissioner. My question is to the amendment coming up around sheriffs. Genuine question. I haven't figured out my opinion on it. I know I voted in the state, put it on the ballot.
Question.
The context is, the sheriff, the sheriffs are gonna be elected, but the accountability goes to the attorney general if there's any issues, not to the county commissioners anymore. Do you support that, or do you not support that in your position?
Well, so I gotta, so since I, what, I have one minute?
Two.
Oh, so I could pontificate on this. First of all, I think the reason they wanted to have this on the ballot is the general principle that the sheriff is a very, very critical and important position, even from the beginning of our founding, that that was a position that protects people in each county. And very important that we keep that position, and they want to keep it elected so we don't have it being interfered with by the county commissioners or other entities. So I think that's the key reason, whether they answer your question, the authority going to the attorney general, that is kind of a question mark. I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I don't have the details. I think the major reason they put this on the ballot, and I'm not sure how you voted on it, but mostly was to keep the sheriff elected. I think they exempted, is it Riley County? As they exempted? Because they had already made a change. But, you know, I think in general, the more local we can keep these positions, and it's directly, the people have more impact on the local government than they do on the state. And we've seen that with like our tornado relief bill, it took three years to get it through, the legislature. Something that the Democrats agreed with, the Republicans agreed with, everybody agreed with, but we couldn't get it through. So it makes it more difficult when the power is more diffused. So I would say I support that in general, but I do have to say, I would probably have, I haven't really researched it. I haven't cast my ballot yet, so we'll see. I'll let Jeff take over the rest of the answer.
So personally, I'm against diminishing any authority the sheriff has. The sheriff is the highest form of law enforcement in the nation. He's above federal agents, he's above US Marshals, he's above state troopers, he's above everyone. The reason is because he's elected. The term sheriff, I don't know if you guys know, comes from reed of the shire. It goes back to when Jesus was low paid. He's been the elected local official in law enforcement since the beginning of time. So if you take any of that authority away, I think it's a bad idea.
So commissioners, on the, back on the bridges, we have, the Blue Bridge has a lot of history and significance. It goes into a cornfield.
Question?
Right. The Blue Bridge goes into a cornfield, whereas the bridge you're proposing would go directly connecting. Are you getting support from the higher entities? Are you getting pushback? Where, are both bridges going to benefit our community?
I'm gonna let Jeff start with that answer for that one.
So the Centennial Bridge is needed to replace for a long time. We're not really trying to take away from that. KDOT in the beginning said, you can choose one or the other, you can't have both. They backed down from that since then, said they're completely two separate projects. We're gonna go ahead with Centennial replacement, and let's talk about this new bridge. Because it's such a big project, like Mike was saying, it's a mega project, $250 million probably. So it's two separate issues. But in the beginning, there was a big pushback. You can have one, but you can't have both. That's since changed, and I think the support changed once that came out because they were worried, well, Fort Leavenworth will still use Centennial Bridge, even if we were to build 152 Bridge. People going for Fort Leavenworth and the airport, they're still not gonna go down south and up and around it, it would be longer. But the majority of the population is centered now over this 152 Bridge. But there's still a definite need for the Centennial Bridge. So depending on who you talk to, everybody's for the new bridge, they just wanna make sure they also get the Centennial Bridge.
Okay, and my response is, I think would be the same. We need to look at, I can't hear you. My response would be the same. We need to look at, but back to what we said before. It's very important that we not look at, I know the criticism has been, oh, this is such a big project, that's just unbelievable that you would even put that on your, on your sites. But you gotta realize, the ARPA funds include these mega projects. And if we don't have the big vision, then we will not in any sense have an opportunity to get these projects. So we need to, we need to look in terms of saying, hey, they're rebuilding all the tunnels in New York with the mega project money from ARPA. There's no reason in the world that this region and Leavenworth County can't get this bridge. And if you look at the, if you look at the map of the metro area, one of the things that we have is we have Leavenworth as an outlier. It's so hard to get up here. You gotta drive through how, how many stop signs? Or, what is that? 27 stoplights, and that makes it very difficult to get up here. So if we had this mega project, you'd be at Zuma Rosa in 10 minutes, you'd be at the airport in 15, or 10, or whatever the number was. Really, seven minutes. And we would tie this community into the metro in a way that it's never been tied into the metro. And you would see the kind of growth that they have in Liberty, Missouri. So I think, and living in a district that doesn't always want growth, that is the question. Do you really want growth in a, but this would really, in a way, benefit our community by tying us into the Kansas City metro.
This is on the same subject, but how are you accessing the land to build this road?
Accessing the land, you mean? Or acquiring it? Or what?
Yeah.
So that's the beauty of this project. There would, the GPS path that we've roughly drawn in that, it's not set in stone, would not tear down one single home. A project of this size in this day and age, that's all we've done heard of.
It's on farmland, isn't it?
It's mostly farmland. So on the Kansas side, there's only two owners of most of the property, and one is the state of Kansas. So the state of Kansas actually owns 80% of the land we would need to acquire to build this. The state of Kansas farm ground went through a inundation, flood inundation in '93, and it made a lot of sand deposits. So they're actually not even farming these sand soils. We would draw, we drew this path to take advantage of most of the sand soils. So most of this land is not even being farmed now, it's wasteland.
So why are you encouraging our people to go to Missouri? And why not keep our tax dollars in Kansas?
So it's a two-way bridge, it's not one way. But they want to... But they want to go over there, spend their money, and then not come. People from their side will come here and spend their money.
All you do is talk about Zona Rosa.
So Liberty, Missouri had a lot of empty stores that were vacant for years. Once they got the 152 connectivity, people started filling those stores up. Leavenworth, I went around and took pictures of all the vacant stores, 122 vacant lots in stores in Leavenworth and Long Island. Those will be filled up with businesses overnight.
So have any of you watched the series called The Men Who Build America? Anybody seen that series? We have got to be people in our community in Leavenworth that see big visions and big pictures of what we want to do with this community, not little, little, oh, we can't do this, this is impossible, this is not possible. I'm telling you, folks, we've got to get these mega projects on the queue and in design so when these monies become available, then we can access them. Because guess what? They're going to spend this money somewhere in the United States, and we might as well have some big infrastructure built here that benefits our community. And I guarantee, I'm not talking just about Zona Rosa, but look at the homes and housing, folks that work in Kansas City, now they can come to Leavenworth and be there really fast. And so they're going to say, oh, Leavenworth's not so far out of the way for me to go live. And it's a great community, there's a great, our county is a great place to live and have a family, and let's, let's open the door to this. And the mega funding may, you know, all we're saying is get this project on the shelf and designed, and then when the monies become available through these mega projects, then we look at it. And I didn't want to anticipate this would become about the, the bridge, but this is an important part of the future if you look down the road 20 years, and it ties in with our economic development for the community.
Last question.
Gentlemen, appreciate you being here today. My question is this, has there been any sort of analysis with respect to the, A, the tax impact on the residents of Leavenworth County and the costs associated with things like higher traffic rates, more police needed, things like that, when you're talking a major project like this? Thank you.
Well, I think what you're saying is would the, would your services and infrastructure support the big boom in the population? So the answer is it kind of goes hand in hand. As you add houses and businesses, you add tax base, so you're able to afford everything you just mentioned, police, fire protection, ambulance service. So the idea is if you have a good economic plan in place, then those things should actually accompany each other as they happen.
And I mean, look at our downtown, here in Leavenworth and Tonga and Oxy here, we've got to look at how it's, they're becoming places that people would like to go to, would like to see, little boutique shops, little places that people would like to visit, sort of like the western Missouri. But I can see if we make this community more accessible, our downtowns in all of our communities would open up, and it would be a way to bring our community up to a point where folks are having opportunity here. The kids don't have to leave our community, we have jobs here, we have things to do here, we have small entrepreneurs here. And we're already on that path, but we need to have the vision for if these ARPA funds or funding through the federal government become available for these mega projects, we have to have the vision to say, let's get this at a what they call shovel-ready position, where it's in the planning station, we're ready. When these funds become available, then we can say, okay, we're ready. Get both of our senators in both states on board, get the, I know Jeff's visited with the county officials and across the river, and they're pretty much on board. So let's work together and make this happen, and not close our minds and say, oh, oh, this can't be done, we'll have too many houses coming in, we'll have too many this one. When you have those kind of problems, that is problems related to growth and how we solve the growth. Those are good problems to have, and I think that's, that's what we want. We have, we want to have a progressive vision for what's going to happen in Leavenworth, the kind of community this will be.
Gentlemen, you each have one minute for closing comments.
So I've been county commissioner for four years. I think when the reelection comes around, it's kind of like a test, that's your, that's your report card. So the next four years, I'm hoping to work on things like the pilot check. I've been to DC to fight for you guys to get a pilot check for a federal facility. I'm working on a LA VTR, I didn't get a chance to talk about that, the local antler and tax relief fund. The state has not paid us for 20-some years now. Leavenworth County should receive about $3 million this year. When the state stopped paying the county, the LA VTR, we had to raise our mill, adding nine whole mills to make up for the LA VTR and the demand transfers that we were shorted that particular year. So we're trying to get back to that spot, trying to get the LA VTR funds reinstated. Several, several other projects, you know, we're working on Cushing Building, all things to, our number one goal is always to lower taxes. So every year, we say, what can we do to lower taxes? Every project that comes up, how can we address this to lower taxes? It's always about lowering taxes. So I just want to make sure you guys know that that's always our number one goal.
Did you just have one minute?
Do we have one or two?
One.
One minute, I've got to make it fast. We have, I appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to be here and communicate with you folks about these issues. Something I didn't touch on is we paid $7 million for the roads with the 2015 sales tax, $4 million of those in southern Leavenworth County. We have been proactive in looking at safety on roads. We have the three most accident-prone areas in the county. We put road projects in those areas, 158th Street, we've asked for traffic light studies, we're approving at Helen Siltop, they're going to level the hill, at 158th Street, they're going to level the hill. Tonga and Oxy Road is going to be wide and shoulders. So we're looking at safety issues on roads, and we have done a lot on that, and we're going to continue that. Economic development, we talked a lot about that, that ties into all these road bridge issues, and what the development of the community will be as far as industry. And I got to stop. Thank you very much.